Yes. Quarum Fending!
Need the right to call.
Does this one work? Does this? Okay, but this is, this one doesn't. Hello, nope, is this working? Alright! Call to order, can we do the livestream? I'm sorry Commander, I'm gonna interrupt you if you could come up and lead us in the pledge. Colonel, could you come up and lead us in the pledge? Thank you Commander. Choose a commander. Good evening everyone, thank you all for coming, I'm happy to say we have Quarum tonight. Before we start though, I am gonna call off... I'm gonna call off the names of the people who we did not mark in, so if you are here, please jump up and say that you are. Aria Calucci, Sal Delesio, Alan Essis, Hey Wen Hong, Roy Jung, Ying Ko, Chi Po Lee, Gabriela Lopez, Jodi Minafa, Georgette Neglia, Tari Seaton, Nancy Soro, Ahmed Uza, Catherine Vero, Raymond Wang, Robert Whitaker, Andrew Windsor, Sejong Young, Daniel Zurich. Anybody I mentioned that is here? At this point, we're gonna open up to the, um, the public portion of the meeting. So, I know the Commander is here, she wanted to come up and say a few words.
Good evening ladies and gentlemen. Good evening ladies and gentlemen, I'm Misty Camwell, I'm the Garrison Commander at Fort Hamilton. Thank you for your continued support. I think you'll start to see additional rotary wing activity in the area over the next couple of days as the conclusion of the Corrections Mission Set ends for JTF Empire Shield. I anticipate that those soldiers will come and go via the helicopters again, so don't be alarmed. Really just a part of the state's mission set, and if you have any questions or concerns, you can reach out to us on the installation. The one highlight I'd like to make is really the Community Club. Membership is opening for the summer festivities and for pool membership. And we'll be including virtual golf this summer. So those of you who need to warm up before you head out to Diker Heights, please just engage the team, check us out on the webpage, and we'll be happy to help you. If you have any challenges with access to the installation, again, you can reach out to our visitor control center. I've got some flyers I'll put out in the back, and I welcome your questions, but thank you Laurie, appreciate it.
Thank you. Deputy Inspector, would you like to come up?
Hi, good evening all. Just had a couple announcements. Next Tuesday on the 18th at 7 o'clock, we're gonna have a community council meeting at the precinct at 7 o'clock. Whoever can come, please come. At the meeting, we'll discuss current crime trends, and it's an opportunity for you guys to, and the community, to speak to us, and for us to speak to the community and hear what's going on. In addition to that, very exciting news, and sad news. It's gonna be on next Wednesday, the 19th, at 12 o'clock. Detective Steve Augusta, he's going to be having a walkout on that day. At 12 o'clock, we'll be serving some light refreshments, and then at 2:30 in the afternoon, we'll do the walkout. So please, Steve has, you know, had a big impact on the community, to the precinct, and he's been here for thirty-nine, he's been on the department for thirty-nine years, and at the precinct for about, I think, thirty-five years. So whoever can come, please come and have, and celebrate Mufus. Also, on the 28th of March, which is Friday, the following Friday after the 19th, Detective Carmelo, he's, uh, he's also gonna be walking out, he's also leaving. We'll be sending out the information for Detective Endra also, and he'll be also having some light refreshments at the precinct, and then after that, we're having a walkout for him. Everybody, Detective Endras, we haven't put it too solid yet, we'll get that information for everybody. But please, these guys had a big impact on the community, a big impact on the police department and the precinct, and everybody in the community is welcome to come celebrate Mufus. Thank you.
Okay, it's rep time. Stanley, do you have anything?
Good evening everybody. My name is Stanley, I am a rep for Councilmember Susan Swann. I just have six quick items. Number one, we have test, we have tax preparation in our office every Saturday from now until April the 5th, please come by and, or make an appointment, please, if you need free tax preparation. These are for low-income seniors mainly, okay? Second, next, March twenty-third, Sunday, March 23rd, right here, we're gonna be having a Women of Distinction Award, right in this, right in this room here, at 2:00 PM, March 23rd. If you have any suggestions for people that we should recommend for this award, please email the office. Number three, and four, the council member happens to be a member of the Sanitation Committee of City Council, so I have two things to talk about. One is a new Intro 1126. Residents will be getting, will be able to get free garbage cans to comply with the new bin requirement, okay? More information will be coming, that was passed last week. The week before, Intro 1186 requires sanitation to conduct a study of which New York City religious communities are impacted on the set of time for the garbage bin. We have had many complaints from the Jewish community, we heard you, and we passed this bill. Last two, today, there were two intro passed by the council member. One is in relation to building inspection and reporting following complaints relative to rats and other pests. That's Intro 1217. 1218 is a local law to amend the code to require the installation of sign indicating the presence of speed cameras. Okay? Thank you very much.
Who else do I have rep wise? Up Paul.
Good evening, Paul Aguirre, Glendale District Attorney's Office, led by Eric Gonzalez. I'd like to take this time to highlight two law enforcement achievements. In 2024, it was the safest year on record in Brooklyn. We had the fewest shootings and the fewest shooting victims for 2024. And also in 2024, with our conviction review unit, we exonerated the 40th person from a wrongful conviction. And on April 5th, we will be having a gun buyback. Our gun buybacks are very successful, the first one that I ever did was December of '22, and we got close to 300 guns off the streets. And that's how we keep Brooklyn safe. It's gonna be at Cornerstone Baptist Church, that's in Bedford-Stuyvesant, on April 5th, and that's a Saturday, and I'll be leaving flyers. Thank you.
Hi everybody, my name is Justin, I'm here from Councilmember David Carr's office. Just to let you know, now that spring's coming, they're gonna have a lot of overgrowth in certain areas. If that's the case, you can give us a call, we'll send out the clean team, they come and do overgrowth cleanup. If you notice that there's trash piling up in specific areas, again, call us and let us know, we'll send out the clean team. The councilman funds this team to come out and address these areas, and especially during springtime, overgrowth is a big issue, so if we can get out there, we will. If we can't get to immediately, we'll add you to the list, and we'll get out there as fast as possible. It's a small team, but we will have you on record, and if we can't get out there, we'll try and get sanitation out there to take care of it. I'm also gonna be here afterwards, you can speak to me about any particular city issue you might have, and I'm happy to help you, help you work on that as well. Thank you.
Hi everyone, my name is Tal Littwin, I'm representing Brooklyn Borough President Antonio Reynoso. Just have a few events coming up. Well first of all, this community board application period, Brooklyn had over 1,100 applications, which is a record number for Brooklyn's community boards, many for this community board. In terms of upcoming events, on Thursday, April 10th, is the State of the Borough. So join BP Reynoso at the Boys and Girls High School at 6:00 PM. Or doors open at 6:00 PM, the program will begin at 7:00 PM. Also, there, we are hosting free tax prep sessions on Mondays and Wednesdays at Borough Hall until April 9th. And so if your income is less than sixty thou, sixty-five thousand dollars, or less than ninety-three thousand dollars, if you have dependents, you are eligible. Every Monday, at the Cortell U Library, Constituent Servi, Services is there, if there are any questions. And then on Tuesday, April 15th, Stonewall Development Corporation and BP Reynoso have organized a Fraud Risk Prevention Workshop to inform Brooklynites about how to be aware of digital and online fraud attempts. And that will be held from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM at Brooklyn Borough Hall. So if you're interested in any of these events, there's flyers on the table, and you can ask me any questions, I'll be in the back. Thank you.
Good evening everyone, Christina Botego, Deputy Chief for Councilmember Abilaz, here on behalf of Wincy, who I think is usually with you. Good to see all of you. Few quick announcements, first is, budget season is upon us. This is a public process, we encourage all of you to participate. You can come down, offer testimony in the subject areas that interest you, you can provide written testimony. Please reach out to our, our office if you need more information about how to participate. But just quickly wanna list a few that you might be interested in. March 13th, there'll be a hearing on the education budget. March 17th, a general welfare hearing which will cover social benefits. March 17th, Parks and Recreation. And I think something near and dear to this community board sanitation hearing coming up on, on March 25th at 9:30 AM. So happy to provide more details if you all would like to provide testimony. We al, also offer mobile office hours, I, I think you all are aware of this, but in Diker Heights at McKinley Library coming up on March 20, 1 to 5:00 PM. We continue to have ongoing free tax services at our district office located at 4417 Fourth Avenue, Tuesdays and Fridays, 2 to 7, and Saturdays. Please call our office if you'd like to make an appointment. Today, we passed a piece of legislation, Resolution 41, this is in support of Senator Gennardis's legislation at the state level, which would provide tax benefits to all families with children under seventeen. Benefits would range from 100 to 1,600 dollars, and we thank Senator Gennardis for, for their work on this. Lifting children out of poverty, this has become a big issue, especially in District 38 since the sunset of the expanded child tax credit. So we're glad to see this pass. And finally, Happy Ramadan and Women's History Month. I look forward to talking with all of you. Thank you.
Hi everyone, good evening, Nerissa, coming from Congresswoman Abette Clark's office. Just wanna share some upcoming events that we have. Tomorrow evening at 6:30, we're gonna have a virtual tax event that's geared specifically towards small businesses. If you're interested, feel free to find me in the back, I'll get you the QR code. You can also find it on Eventbrite for tickets. We're gonna be having a job fair next Tuesday, March 18th, from 10 to 2 at Central Brooklyn Library. That's gonna be with Assemblymembers Ferris Afront Forrest, Brian Cunningham, Robert Carroll, as well as State Senators Zalner Myrie. So feel free to tell anyone you know who might be looking for a job or looking for other opportunities. Come with their resumes, or we'll give them advice if they need it as well. Also, applications for our art competition are open, so if you know high schoolers within the district, feel free to reach out to us. We wanna support arts within the community, so high schoolers can submit their artwork for the chance to win a free trip to Washington DC and have their artwork there for a full year. So feel free to reach out to me, I'll be in the back, and again, if you ever need help, federal services, we're always there for you.
Do I have any other reps? Any other reps?
Good evening everyone, my name is Tamby John, I'm the Branch Manager for the Nudge Library. I apologize with my voice, I've been a little sick. But I would like to welcome everyone to the library, 1743 86th Street. And I'm also here on behalf of the Highland Branch, which is at 1664 West 13th Street. So basically, I wanna say, if you're 18 and over, and you like to sing, or you want to practice, or you want to learn, join the Diker Singers on Fridays from 2 to 4:00 PM at the Nudge Library, and lift up your voice and sing. If you want to learn English, the library offers free classes, but you must sign up online. Classes are currently being filled for the spring semester. We also offer drop-in conversation classes at the Nudge Library on Tuesdays from 5 to 7, and the Highland Libraries on Thursdays from 5:30 to 7:30. For more information on these events, please visit us at brooklynlibrary.org. I wanna wish everybody Happy Ramadan, and a very happy and safe St. Patty's Day.
Thank you. Any other reps? Any other reps?
Hi, good evening everybody. My name's Jordan Mennelli, I'm with the Department of Sanitations, Community Affairs Bureau. Just here to speak tonight on the curbside compost enforcement. So as everybody's aware, currently all NYC residents are required to separate yard waste and food scraps for, for, yard waste and food soil paper, as well as food scraps from trash and recycling. Beginning April 1st, 2025, property owners not in compliance will be subject to violations. I did bring a flo, a flyer that's here on the back that listing the breakdown of all the violations, so if anybody wants to take one in the back. Just a little background on how the enforcement works, similar to current set-out rules, if you do not separate your composting from your trash, you may receive a fine. DSNY can go through the waste to ensure that there's proper separation. A little background for some people, just as a reminder on what to compost. Leaf and yard waste, all food scraps, including meat, bone, shells, and dairy, prepared and cooked food, greasy uncoated paper plates, and pizza boxes, and products that are certified or labeled compost. Things to kinda differentiate on what to not to compost. Diapers, personal hygiene products, animal waste, wrappers, non-paper, uh, non-paper packaging, foam products and recyclable materials. And just a little background on what, the importance of what, what, what the composting. When, when we service compost from residential establishments, we're able to cha, change that into, to, for, uh, natural fertilizer, as well as anaerobically it's digested at other facilities, where we create a renewable energy, to power homes. When this organic material is, is not separated and sent to landfills, that biogas is released into the atmosphere, and that accelerates, uh, climate change. That's, that's the importance of why we're emphasizing to follow through with the composting. And then for, if there's any individuals or seeking additional info on, on the, the compost as, as a whole, or the enforcement of it, we do have info sessions to watch or record it, to join or recorded webinars for additional information, that's on our, the sanitation website. Thank you. That's on the sanitation website. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Anyone else in the public? Okay, closing that public portion. Before we move on, I would like to... No, I would do like a moment of silence for Sandy Ratchett, mom of Ross Brady, and Louise Martini, who was a longtime Bath Beach resident and community board eleven liaison. Just a moment of silence. Thank you all. Now, we have a presentation by New York City Parks about the design for Bensonhurst Park, so if you'd like to come up.
All right. Just one more. We're gonna do a little audible here for some technical reasons. We're gonna show what we're gonna show on these two TV screens here, so you guys can just kind of check over here. I'll go up in just a second. My name is Jim Morris from the Parks Department.
Right into it. All right. Thank you, everybody. As I was saying, my name is Jim Morris. I'm the Deputy Chief of Staff for Brooklyn Operations in the New York City Parks Department. Have a little bit of tech drama here as we get into it, but we are here today to talk about Bensonhurst Park. We've got some funding. This is kind of the second phase of reconstruction for the, what we call like the northern part, the Cropsy Avenue part of Bensonhurst Park. We reconstructed the playground portion of this park. It opened from a reconstruction in 2020. So this is more what we call the MPPA, which means multi-purpose play area. Yeah, it's even better. Wow! It's like a multiplex experience now. You can look to your left, or you can look to the straight, whatever you want. And thank you, Andrew. Thank you for all of that. Andrew's a superstar here. Thank you, Andrew. All right, so we won't take too much of your time. I really appreciate it. So let me see if this works here. It may work. All right, Dennis, I might ask you to flip through slides. Dennis or Andrew. Just go back one, if you don't mind. Just a... All right, cool. So, all right, why are we here? So we got $6.8 million to fund portion of Bensonhurst Park. Again, it's the northern side above where you guys know where like Target is and things like that. The northern side where the playground is, by the public restroom area, we are funding paths and the MPPA, courts, largely some... Where the basketball court is right now, that area of the park. So we received $6.8 million from the Council Speaker and Councilmember Brennan to reconstruct this area. We kicked this process off last spring. Any capital project for the Parks Department is part of a three-year process. The design phase is the first part. That is kicked off on the day that we have the public input meeting. That happened on April 24th of last year. We go through a year of design. We're kind of, we're in the midst of that right now. We worked on the design. That's where these people next to me are, right here. And we are here to bring this back to you, gain feedback, and hopefully, a community board approval letter, so we can move forward with the design and move forward to the next phase, which would be like the procurement phase, and then through the construction phase, and so on and so forth. I won't take much of your time, me personally. There's already enough of drama, but I just wanna kick it over to Sarah Dorner, who's from our consultant design team at Stan Tech. She will go through the project in full. Sarah?
Thank you, Jim. Hi, everyone. And I'm excited to walk you through what we have in store for the project. Next slide? All right. So just quickly, the goals for the project: to improve the sports courts and the adult fitness options, create a universally accessible skate spot for people of all ages and ability levels, to improve the site lighting, walkability, storm water management capabilities, to provide new seating areas, bike parking, drinking fountains, trash receptacles, and native plantings. Next slide, please. For all projects, we consider flood risk. This is our coastal flood risk. And in the next slide, you'll see our stormwater flood risk. It doesn't appear on this slide, but we do have some localized ponding problems within the park, which our project is gonna address with stormwater management and green infrastructure. Here is the surrounding land use, mostly residential. The Belt Parkway bisects the park, and then you've got that commercial area with the Target to the south. Here is the surrounding neighborhood context. Bensonhurst Park is a destination park. People come here from all around. It connects to the Shore Parkway Greenway. And there's a couple of smaller parks in the neighborhood, both of which have basketball. And I'll note that there is not a skate park in this general area. And here is the existing programming for all of Bensonhurst Park. You can see the Belt Parkway bisexit. The southern section connects to the Shore Parkway. There's the sports complex, ball fields. At the top right, you can see a dashed green line. That's the newly reconstructed portion that happened in 2021 with the new playground. And our portion of the park is dashed in black there. And we can zoom in on that in the next slide. All right, so this is what we have now. We've got the handball courts, the basketball courts, the multi-purpose play area, and then the big circular lawn area with the pathway. Next slide. So back in April, when we had the community input meeting, it was really well-attended. We had a lot of great ideas. Can't go over everything we heard, but the big takeaway was that, excuse me, handball is very important to the users of this park. So we listened, and that was a top consideration in our design. There were also strong supporters for a skate area. We heard that there was support for a beginner-friendly skate area that would have a lot of trees, seating for parents and spectators. Other things we heard were improved adult fitness and other amenities like the drinking fountains, bike racks, seating, drainage, of course, and green spaces. Next slide? All right, and so for site analysis, some things we think about is landscape architects, the condition of the pavements. We can see those drainage areas in blue. And then we've got at the top, a really steep slope, which could be utilized for a skate feature. Next slide? Here's our existing trees. There are huge gorgeous big trees on the site, and we'll be preserving as many of those as possible. There's just a few that will be removed for poor condition, and we will be replacing those. Excuse me. Okay, so I'm just going through some existing site photos. Here's the northern basketball court and that slope. Here's the basketball court area, and you can see the handball court behind. Here's that handball court that we're gonna be reconstructing, all six courts. Here's the existing adult fitness equipment. And here's a view out towards that existing circular lawn and pathway. These are two entrances that we're gonna be working on with the design. And here is our overall schematic design for the park. And you can see... I'm gonna zoom in on the MPPA area on the next slide. Can you go back one sec? Thank you. So we'll be reconstructing that circular pathway around the lawn area, more or less where it is now. We'll be adding enhanced lighting, and we'll be planting a few more trees, some flowering trees in there. And then zooming in on the MPPA area. So starting at the top left, we will be refinishing all six courts. We will be refurbishing the wall, so that's all fresh. We'll have a new staircase. At the top right, there will be a viewing area for spectators for the skate area. There'll be a new staircase down to where you could enter either the handball courts or the skate spot. And then you can see we utilize that existing topography for part of a skate feature. And it is tucked into a bunch of planting, so we were able to minimize fencing around the skate park. And then we have reconfigured the basketball area to be nice and open. We've added bleacher seating for the handball courts and a new adult fitness area. And that's a multi-unit, multi-activity fitness equipment, and it's tucked into the shade trees there. Next slide? This is just the existing fencing. It's quite worn out. And here's the updated fencing. So we'll be refinishing some of the fencing there in blue, and we can reconfigure it in the basketball area to be nice and open, and then just very minimal fencing around the skate park. All right, and here's our adult fitness equipment, this multi-unit. It's got a lot of ADA accessible options. It's got parallel bars, pull-up bars, monkey bars, plyometrics, and a sit-up bench. And then we also have painted agility fitness area that'll be next to it to enhance the fitness opportunities. And we're gonna be getting all new furnishings throughout our reconstruction area. We'll get... And it'll all match the new construction for the playground portion of the park, the 1939 World's Bench, the bike rack, drinking fountain and bottle filler, new trash cans, and fencing, and upgraded lighting. Next slide? And here's our materials and colors. We look to the new playground portion of the park to get inspiration for that. We want everything to blend in harmoniously. And the next slide? Here's our plant palette. We're gonna be adding a bunch of lovely new shade trees with beautiful fall color. Some flowering trees will pop in the spring, and then some shrubs around the skate area. And here is a rendering, a bird's eye view looking from over the circular lawn area. You can see the handball courts completely refurbished, the new entrance, that skate area at the top right with the platform for viewing. The bleacher seating next to the handball courts, nice open basketball area, and very shady adult fitness area. And the next slide? And here is a view of our skate area, looking down from that spectator area. Excuse me. As opposed to a skate park, our skate design team calls this a skate spot, so it's lower speed, less high features. So it's designed to be friendly for beginners, as well as advanced people can enjoy themselves as well. And it is designed to have distinct skate lanes to make it safe for a lot of people to be in there at the same time. And we have a nice row of trees screening between the handball and the skate area. And you can see everything is surrounded by planting and very minimal fencing. And next slide, I believe? It's supposed to be the overall plant. Oh, here we go. So that's our last slide. Thank you very much, and we look forward to your questions and feedback.
Are there any questions for Parks? Any questions?
Okay. Okay. How did we decide? In the front there, yeah.
All right. I always have a question because it's very dear and near.
I mean, Parks is very important. What we have now, and you described a lot of new things, but are you making anything where the concrete can absorb some of the rainwater because of that area being, you know, highly flooded?
Absolutely. So we're gonna be having green infrastructure in the planted areas around the side. And because it is a large paved area, we can't have... We can't absorb it all with planting, so there's gonna be a tank, and everything can store in the tank to hold the rainwater during those big storms.
So you're gonna have a... What kind of tank? A very high tank?
No, no. It'll be underground. It's just pipes underground, basically. Not really a tank. It's the pipes with gravel that holds stormwater for a time after a big storm.
And the concrete, it's not the new one that we were talking about with the... That they have absorption possibilities?
Yeah, we're not using porous concrete. It's mostly gonna be asphalt for the sports court surfacing. So, yeah, and the porous concrete is very rough. It's not a good sports surface. We're not gonna be using that, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Just one question.
Yes.
Because we used a big... No, I'm serious, because I said in the other part, my people are adorable now. We do this for scratch.
You thought it was what?
Scratch.
You said trash?
Yes.
Yeah, the... The... The feedback wasn't at the school meeting. You know, we put where areas that we can, but it's good to know that it's been a while. We did get a lot of feedback. Handball is one of the... It was a part of it that we could do handball and then utilize it. But for this basketball skating, this working up in school, we don't put somebody in that area. Do you understand? Ping pong. That's how we handle this.
Is there time to add ping pong tables?
Ping pong tables.
Ping pong tables.
Is that what?
Ping pong tables.
Ping pong.
Ping pong, sorry.
Ping pong, ping pong.
We can certainly look into it and discuss it with the team, for sure. But as Sarah did say, this was... Hi, I'm Paul Kadenakis, by the way. I'm the Project Manager at Parks for this project. Unfortunately, we couldn't remove a lot of the handball that we originally thought we might be able to remove it to get some space. And there was a lot of program, as you can see. So we have an enormous area that is still dedicated to the handball. So we had to be very strategic in how we work this space, because you see, it's a pie shape, and it's hard to fit a square peg and a round pole kind of a thing. So we do have the basketball and whatnot, and the skate park, which was, what we were told was important in this, for this design. It was difficult to get more. And I think the design team did a great job in terms of trying to actually fit what we could in this space. And also without making additional impervious surfaces to your point where we would have, we would take away green space, and, you know, that's not something that we would like to do for climate change and stormwater management. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Jim, did I hear you say that you wanted a letter of support?
Actually, yeah, it's what we're gonna need to give before we're done.
So for board members only, Parks Department is asking for a letter of support based on this result? So a motion, Victoria makes the motion. What? Yeah.
Please not mention bathrooms are in the...
B bathrooms aren't they there?
There is a bathroom just off-screen from this zoomed-in shot. So it is... Dennis, can we go back to the overall park? It's just about 100 feet away. There we go. See that oval at the top? It's right in the center of that. So it's right next to the restroom. Yeah. I don't know if we can fit pickleball and six handball courts. That's a lot for such a small space.
So you're gonna have to bring people down and...
Yeah?
Yeah, it's easier to convert the test courts into pickleball.
So I have a motion on the table to give a letter of support to the Parks Department for the design as presented. I have seconded. Do I have all in favor? Do I have any days? Do I have any extensions? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming out here. At this point, I need... I would like to have... At this point, I mean, I would like to have the motion to close the public caution of the meeting. Second, all in favor? Any nays? Any abstentions? Okay, moving right along. Everyone was mailed quite some time ago, the minutes for January 9th. And we haven't had a chance to approve them yet. I don't believe there was any edits. Did anyone have any edits? Okay, so I need a motion to accept the minutes from January 9th. Motion, second, all in favor? Any nays? Any abstentions? Okay, moving right along. My report, ready? Okay. So, our next meeting at April 10th, the Conflict of Interest Board is going to be providing training to all board members. And all board members are required to receive training in the New York City Conflict of Interest law once every two years. So they will go over the law, how it affects voting, as well as restrictions on political activity and other common situations. That's the next meeting. At the May meeting, the Department of Environmental Protection is tentatively scheduled to present flood issues to the district. Okay. We have sent a letter to a member who has not been to one meeting since they were appointed in May. We have not received any responses. We have emailed, mailed, snail mailed, and so forth. So I would like to put a motion on. Yes. 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 It's a meeting here, at our meeting, yes. So we have not received a response from this person since May, have not heard from them. So I am making a motion to remove Arya Kalucha for cause. Do I have a second? Victoria, do I have all in favor?
Yes.
Do I have any nays? Do I have any abstentions? So be it. You could let them know for sure. They're gone. Now I have other news, which some people may think is good, others not. School Construction Authority has notified us that the proposed site selection of blocks 61, 80 lots 31, 33, 44, better known as 7120 New Yutri Avenue. Do you all remember that? Okay. It's going to be a new school. Elementary, 451 seats. So we should be hearing from School Construction here. That was 7120 on New Yutri Avenue and 71st. It used to be a bank, and they were going to put up a nine-story, 10-story, sorry, 10-story apartment complex. Well, now School Construction has purchased the property, and it's going to be an elementary school. But most don't go over four. I've never seen over four. All right? Okay. So going forward, we are going to have a, have to have a public hearing on this. April, by April 3rd? April 3rd, okay. Write down that date. April 3rd is a public hearing, yes. Seven. Okay, so it will be the site screening committee that is going to be handling this for the public hearing and a review of the application. Moving right along. Thank you so much. Before I start off, I need to recognize and thank Detective Vendra and Detective Augusta to their service and partnership. I can't begin to tell you what a loss it is for this community. And while I'm happy for you, I'm sad for me. Sometimes I speak to these gentlemen more often than I do my husband during the work week. It's the truth. They have been invaluable, and, and I really just want to, again, thank you for your service. And just recognize how great you guys are and what a loss it'll be for the Bensonhurst community. And I'm sure Twin Spence will allow. I know he's been upset because they've been just great partners and... So we will be there for your walkouts, cheering you on and congratulating you. But I, I just wanted to say again, thank you from the bottom of my heart. Oh, then I will definitely be there. Back in January, I had sent to the board the responses to the board's capital expense budget priorities. So the board has a charter mandated role in providing recommendations and input to the city's budget. And you received those back. We also have an opportunity to submit, while we're late, because we didn't have a forum last month, we have an opportunity to comment on those responses. And, and I don't know, you know, if Mayor Moi Lau was here, he would have done a real breakdown of those responses and requests. But I can't begin to tell you how disappointed and upset that those responses don't reflect the needs of this community. So I would like the board, if you're so inclined to authorize me to provide comments, that we believe that flooding is a priority in this community, that we need additional police officers. And, and our, our requests really reflect the needs, and it's an insult. It's an insult to provide comments back that we should remove the request because the police department does not support additional police officers, especially when we have the commissioner on TV requesting to reformulate on how... What word am I looking for? Help me. Retain and hire new officers. Yes, attract, thank you. I had a moment. So if the board would like to authorize me to say that we don't accept those responses. Thank you. Okay. I'm a little bit late, but I wanted to put it in the record that the Department of Transportation released a newsletter update on the 17th Avenue Pedestrian Bridge. They're, they're working on the construction of the piers and abutments of the new structure and the piling and subsurface work. The new estimated completion date for the bridge is in fall of 2025. So we just keep pushing it down the road. So it'll be another summer that this community doesn't have access to the waterfront or the open space. And unfortunately, I haven't received any further updates other than that newsletter. We expect a land use application to soon be referred to the board for 2525 65th Street. Let's see, the May Flava Nursing Home near the triangle of Kings Highway, McDonald, 65th there. The applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment and a text amendment, and a certification for an MTA easement to facilitate a rezoning from an M1-1 and R5B to an R72C2-4 to facilitate a new 13-story mixed-use development. It'll be 162 total units, 41 affordable. And we're waiting to get that application and start that process. The Brooklyn Borough President held a public hearing and issued a recommendation on the 166 Kings Highway Land Use Application. The Borough President recommended approval with conditions that the applicant complete the submission of a technical memorandum to include participation in the SARA, the Senior Affordable Rental Apartment Program, as a proposed development scenario. The application is now pending a vote by the City Planning Commission, and then we'll move on to the council. And the Department of Transportation advised that they have approved an open street on Bay Parkway from Shore Parkway to the Dead End on Saturdays from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., from April 26th to June 14th. I had lots of concerns about that. We were notified, yes. They don't? Oh, the Dead End, the waterfront. So it's from Bay Parkway, Shore Parkway, where you have the double left-hand turns to Doug. Caesar's Bay, on Bay Parkway and Match Point 10. Yes, so that whole block they wanted to close off. I was very concerned. I was very concerned about the impacts on traffic, on the businesses, both Caesar's Bay and Match Point. And I'm happy to say that the Department of Transportation notified me today that they amended that so it will only be closed past the entrance to Caesar's Bay to the water, which is more appropriate. A small win, but it was a win. Because that would have been awful. We see the behavior on a good day of drivers that are frustrated, and their behavior is just unacceptable. The whole area. No, it's more that you. So where you have, if you're going down and making the left to go into Target, you know that Con Ed building on the left? Right at that driveway down to the water and the entrance to the bike path. Yep. And finally, the Brooklyn Cyclones will be holding in Neighborhood Nights. And Bensonhurst Night will be held on May 27th at 6:00 p.m. Tickets will be $25, and they're giving, included in the ticket price, a neighborhood cap. So we would hope that people come out and show their support for the community, and that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now we have a planning and zoning committee report from Ross.
Okay, thank you. The planning and zoning committee met this evening, today, the, whatever today is, the 12th, at 6:30 p.m. For the purpose of two applications for the same address and applicant located at 2325 65th Avenue under the dining out New York City application process. One was, the first was for a sidewalk application in front of their business, extending five feet from the front of their business and 20 feet across the front. The committee had met and voted to support the application with the proviso that it only extends 15 feet across the front, not to, not to extend past the front of the business. With that, actually, I'm just reporting. I don't, we don't need a vote here. We do, we do need a vote. This whole thing about democracy. So, so I don't know if anyone, the, I can tell you the name of the restaurant if you, if you want to know. It's, I think it's the Arborial Grill. The location is 65th Street. It's between Bay Parkway and Avenue O. It's a, it's a busy stretch of area. It's a well-used area. They, they had this shed up and sidewalk structure previously, but they're now applying under the process. So the board is recommending that we support the sidewalk structure to allow them to have that business to continue. Of course, not blocking any doors and not extending past their business. So, having passed the board, I recommend, recommend a motion to the, I'm sorry. Having passed the committee, I recommend it to the board for a motion to support. And we have a motion made? Mediterranean or something, Greek? It's all Greek. It's all Greek to me. A very, it's been around. It's been several, several years it's been there. So, so we have a, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? Oppose? Abstentions? Stands carried, thank you. The second application, final one, was also for the same address, 2325 65th Street. And it was for a street shed, which would come out about five or seven feet into the street itself. There was some discussion, the board, it was split vote, where we had recommended against supporting this application for several reasons, including traffic and danger. And there was some support for it, so I put it out there for a motion or discussion. We have a motion to, to support the board's, the committee's recommendation to oppose the application. We have, okay, we have one. Second? Opposed? Okay. You're opposed, which means you... Okay, so then you support the motion. All right, all in favor of the motion? All opposed? Abstention? Stands carried, thank you. That concludes the business.
Thank you, Ross. Now we're moving on to new business. Sonia, you had new business.
So I just want to say, I'm the president, oopsie, oopsie. I'm the president of the 62nd Precinct Community Council. And I became because Carmelo Vendra, Detective Vendra, many years ago, used to call me at home and say, "Sonia, do you think you could help me out with this? Or do you think you could do this or that?" And he lured me in because he knows I love community activism and helping out. I said, "Sure, Carmelo, sure." And I did it for years and years and years, and here I am. And he has him and Detective Augusta, who's not here right now, who has retired on the 28th of February, and Detective Augusta, who's going to be retiring, I mean Vendra, excuse me. Carmelo, who's going to be retiring on the 28th, are so deserving of the community's love and their wanting to let them know how much we value them. Because they have been here for so many years, making a difference. They are so dedicated. And I think, knowing that he's going to have the walkout, please try to come. It's on the 28th. It's at 2:30. Augusta is going to be on the 19th. It's going to be at 2:30, the walkout. But could you stand, and let's give him a really hearty round of applause? And let's do... Let's give him a, let's give him three hip hip hurries. One, two, three. Hip hip hooray! Hip hip. Hip hip. Carmelo, we love you. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I have a very short announcement. Thank you Detective Augusta, thank you Detective Vendra, because those years, they're helping us apply the lunar new year permit, year after year. I don't know what going to do. They retire, okay? I'm going to need help. Because those years NYPD always called me, there are a lot of questions about my parade. Since they helped us, no question at all, okay? This is two gentlemen, thank you again. Okay. Chinese American Social Service Center going to help community members and seniors apply to affordable housing and senior housing. This is a really, really successful program. During the past two, few months, another senior told me that, "Doctor Law, thank you for your help. I'm going to move to affordable housing. If you want to lend our help, please call us. Make appointment." Okay, thank you very much.
Old business. Motion? Motion from Claudio, who's been dying to do that all night. Seconded by Angelo, all in favor? Have a lovely evening, folks.